Parrott.
Here.
Flunier.
Here.
Hilliard.
Here.
Leach.
Here.
Mennel.
Here.
We have a call.
I ask you to join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is no public hearings today or presentations, press reports, but we would ask public comments. If anyone in the public would like to make a comment, you can come up to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Peterson, and I am here tonight because I am on the docket for my special use permit. I'm representing Spark Academy, which is my hopefully new endeavor. I hope to start doing some demolition tomorrow after this is all passed. I just want to say, you know, thank you for all of your time and effort and energy on this board. I know as a member of the public school system here in town that the board members do way more than this work. So thank you for that. I truly appreciated the plan commission's questioning last week. It was, there were so many more questions than I thought, but it was just really great questioning to make me think through a lot of different aspects of the use of the building and the traffic patterns and planning and things like that. So I appreciate it. Thank you. And I just wanted to put a face with the name. And I'm excited to bring a new educational opportunity to our village. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to address the board? All right, if not, the consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes of our regular meeting July 19th, 2021, and the approval of the bills. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? If not, call the roll.
Flunier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The only thing I have tonight is the village personnel cost for the July 4th celebration. And I think you've got an itemized amount there of $8,673.28. I'd ask for approval of that from the tourism fund.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Flunier.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Village administrator.
I have a couple items tonight, Your Honor. The first of which is the documentation review number 68 that was done by the Illinois Department of Transportation in relation to our motor fuel tax expenditures and receipts of revenue for 2020. Basically what they do, this is just kind of an FYI type of thing. It just, they go through and they look at what we got in as revenue and how we expended it and make sure that it was all for approved uses. So that's what this is, is just showing that they reviewed it and everything was okay.
So it's more or less an audit of everything?
Yeah. They used to come in and do this, but now they're just asking for the documentation and we mail it in. And so they've already reviewed 2020, so we're fairly current with this now, so.
Anyone have any questions? Okay.
The next item I have is just, I had done an analysis of the sales tax receipts for the first half of 2021. For January through June, we've received $2,328,169.17 in sales tax, which is up about $116,000 from last year this time. And I project we'll probably receive close to 2.5 million in the last six months. There is a difference, I'm sure you're aware, that the state of Illinois passed a leveled playing field type act. I don't remember when they passed it, but wherein if you buy online, it is now charged sales taxes received by the municipality to which the address of delivery is. So if you're buying from online purchases and they come, it comes to Morton, then the sales tax comes to us directly. So that has had a pretty significant effect on our sales tax. We've only seen, the January sales would have been money we would have received in April. So we've only seen three months of it, but it is making a significant impact. We will see a slight reduction in the use tax we get because the use tax used to be how the sales tax from online sales were done, and that was allocated by population. So to be honest with you, it looks like people in Morton do buy quite a bit online. So we're getting a greater percentage of sales tax than we did our per capita share of the use tax. You know, projecting it out, it looks like overall for the year it'll be about a $370,000 increase over 2020. But you know, as we've talked about before, 2020 ended up being $164,000 more than 2019, which is amazing with everything that was shut down in 2020, so.
It is amazing statistics, sales taxes holding and improving.
Yes. That's all I have.
Any questions?
Do we, do we have any statistics wise, as far as what amount of that comes from online sales versus?
I have.
Broken mortar stores?
I actually receive a report which if I told you any of the information, I'd have to kill you because I have to sign a confidentiality of what, you know, business is paying what in sales tax. I'm looking at it to try to get, I talked to the state of Illinois today and I said, is there a way to identify without, you know, basically having to look up everybody that doesn't have a Morton address to see if they're an online retailer or if it's just, you know, a lot of multi-level marketing, like say Mary Kay and that type of thing, show them an out-of-state address on those. So I'm looking at it. I'm hoping they gave me some clues as to some easier ways to identify it. So I hope to get some more information maybe for the next quarterly report to be more definite.
It'd just be interesting, interesting to know what, you know, as a percentage wise, what comes from, you know, where.
Right. I used to track what came from one side of the interstate versus the other side, but I can add that to the mix and see where we're coming out. I will say that I was pretty amazed at the sales tax we get from like the large online sales retailers. It'll be interesting to see what it actually ends up being effect wise.
I'm really kind of surprised at $375,000 projected increase over last year. That's over half a million dollars in 24 months. That's a, for a COVID year and that, that's pretty good undertaking.
It's credit to the businesses and citizens of Morton.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
Chief of police.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Corporation counsel.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of fire emergency services.
Thank you, Your Honor. Speaking of money, I have a, we opened the bids for the replacement of one of our fire engines. We got a total of three bids received, and I did put some information in your packet about the price of each of those, but we are, I am recommending that it be awarded to the lowest bidder, which was Alexis Fire Equipment. And the amount is $567,900. That includes just over a $10,000 prepaid discount. If we give them a check at the time of order, then they discount the price that much. We've done that before with ambulances, I know, and it's well worth the money, more money than you get with that money sitting in the bank.
All right, we have a motion on that?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions for the chief?
Where is Alexis Fire from?
Alexis, Illinois.
Thank you.
Oh, good.
Just, just on the other side of Galesburg, between Galesburg and Monmouth County.
Did you give me bids locally?
That was, that would have been the closest, they are actually the closest manufacturer. The other manufacturer was Rosenbauer, and I can't tell you where they're headquartered out of. There was a local salesman, of course. And then E1 was another one, which is out of Ocala, Florida. So Alexis is actually the closest fire truck manufacturer to our location.
We do have other equipment from them, don't we?
We do, yes.
It's pretty specialized. I'm not surprised there aren't any of them.
Yes. One of the things that we like about their closeness, obviously, is that their service is relatively close. So that, that was actually part of the specifications, is they had to have a service center within 100 miles or something like that, so.
So when you spec out a piece of equipment like this, A, how similar is it to other equipment that you have on hand? I mean, is it, as far as service, engine, whatever, is it similar? Or is it, how do you, how does that come through?
It's, it is similar to the one that, the units that's being replaced. So it's, it's a fire engine, not a truck with a ladder on top. But it's very similar to what we're replacing. When we go through, there's actually, you know, a few improvements that we think we can make by relocating hose from this point to that point. So, you know, they're kind of preference things, but substantially the truck will, the engine will be the same.
And is it, are these pretty standard or is it, is it a custom made?
It's, it's, it's custom, it's custom made. So we, we, the specifications that we put out were over 100 pages long, and this is, this is the result of that. This is just their bid. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of information goes into that. We specify down the detailed level of everything that we want.
We have the mechanic work with them, the fire department mechanic, so we get something that's low maintenance?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Parrott.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Flunier.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there any other money you want to spend tonight?
That is it tonight.
Thank you. Director of Public Works is gone. Zoning and code enforcement officer.
I have four items tonight, Your Honor. First item, in your packet, I handed them out. It's a building permit comparative for the first six months of 2020 and 2021. Overall, we were, we issued 340 permits through June of this year. Last year we issued 288, so we're up 52 permits with a total evaluation of $13,192,689.45 for 2021. And 2020 was $8,610,287.78. So it's about $4.5 million of evaluation higher for the first six months of this year than last year.
About a 50% increase. More good news. Any questions? And we gave no sales tax abatement or property tax abatement to get that. Okay, next item.
Next item is petition 21-02SP.
Want to go ahead and explain it a little bit, what it is?
Sure. So this is a special use request for 216 North First Avenue. The special use will allow for a daycare center.
All right, could we have a motion?
So moved.
Any seconds? If not, we want to discuss this a little bit?
I would suggest, just by way of procedure, Your Honor, we would need a second to place it on the floor for further discussion.
I'll say.
Okay, we have first, second, so open for discussion. You want to give us any further information or transfer the trustees?
So in your packet, I, this was, gave a favorable, this was given a favorable recommendation by the plan commission. I did include your packet, the transcripts from that meeting, which details all the questions and comments in the petitioner's, the petitioner's case.
I have a couple of comments. I have several concerns. My first concern was that there were several folks, the neighbors, that expressed that they do not want the special use to be granted. And I was contacted outside of, you know, the planning commission meeting by, by one of them, you know, expressing they're not wanting that. Now, my, both parties, my understanding is mostly a lot of the noise, there may be noise generated by the daycare. And I have a little bit of mixed emotions on that because it's, it is in B2 district and the neighbors, I'm not sure on details when they bought the property. I know one bought their property recently and, you know, it was B2 then, you know, when they bought the property. So, but there's still the fact that two neighbors don't want something to happen, I think, has a little bit of weight to it. The second concern, which is my primary concern, is the traffic and the parking. I believe that the increase in traffic, you know, which is, you know, I think won't be detrimental to the, the street, but I think it will definitely have an impact on the, on the street. That's a street I take actually quite frequently in the mornings, taking my daughter as a cut through to school. And I appreciate, you know, the timeline wise, you know, that you're going to start a little bit later, you know, to kind of avoid the school traffic, and I understand that. But on the parking side of things, the parking lot across the street really bothers me for a coup, for a couple of reasons. One, you don't own the property, there'd be a lease, and I have concerns on, okay, what happens when that lease runs out? Then, then where do people park if the church decides not to renew the lease? And secondly, the kids, you know, and parents presumably crossing, crossing the street. And, you know, it was brought up about a, a crosswalk being put in. And problem is mid-block crosswalks, one, aren't typical. And when they are put in, it's not just a matter of, of striping the road to put a crosswalk in. It's, it's done, you know, typically there'd be, it would parking along both sides of it. You don't want to crosswalk because then you have, if you have people parked there, you have people, kids running in between parked cars, which, you know, you dart right out into traffic. And so my, my feeling is if that were something to happen, then, you know, we need a bump out, you know, or a piece of pavement comes out, curb gets put in, you know, to block off probably two spaces of the parking spaces there to put a crosswalk in. And then, one, you know, how does that get paid for, you know, and then, you know, that's, and it's, I foresee that being, you know, a fairly inexpensive, you know, endeavor more than just striping the road. But one, how does that get paid for? And then two, what happens if in five years you decide to move along or, or 10 years or however long it is, then, then there's a crosswalk there for, you know, what, what purpose? And so I, I don't know that I would be in support of it. I think it's a wonderful, wonderful idea. I just don't think that it's the best location for it.
Any other comments?
I, just another point. One is, I'm more of a, the understanding this is a preschool, and the daycare seems to be more through the date night events. But it seems to be a preschool where it's given education. Am I accurate on that? Okay. Just to sort of touch base on some of the things that Mr. Parrott said, is I agree. I have concerns with the, with the parking and with the traffic as the issue, as opposed to your bump stops. I see the, the crosswalk there. I see, I was having to have a curb cut. I see ADA ramps going in that. But we do not have any parking within 100 feet of any school crosswalk in town. So there will be signage there, and the residents will not be able to park in front of their home if their home is within 100 feet of that crosswalk. That's both sides of the street. We want to give a good view for the, the drivers to go through there. And you're not the only one in town that uses First Avenue as a cut-through street. A lot of people bypass Main Street. There is no traffic regulations, signs or, or traffic signals on First Avenue, so they'll cut right through there. They do that now during the morning. Looks to me that we've got three different classes, morning, afternoon, noon, and later in the afternoon. Midday, I think, is, is what you termed it, in the afternoon.
You're looking at me like I can answer questions.
No, I'm not.
I didn't think I could answer questions.
No, I'm, I'm not asking. I'm, I'm telling you, this is what I've read in the transcripts from the planning commission. So as I see that, you know, I've got traffic coming through there, not just in the morning, not just, and, and 8:30 is when they're looking to start. 8:30 is, is right about the time that the schools, the grade schools start up. You know, they're looking 8:25 for the, most of them, except for Brown, it's a little earlier. But Jefferson is starting around that time, and so you've got people that cut through that to get to Madison, to come through the back of, of the Church Square or Jefferson Square parking lot. So I, I agree, I have major concerns. I agree, I think it's, it's a admirable concept. Like to see it happen, it's just not this location, so.
Could you repeat the 100 foot?
Yeah, we, we do not allow anyone parking during school day, school time, within 100 foot of a school crosswalk. It's to give. Is it 100 feet both directions? 100 feet both directions.
Both sides of the street?
Both sides of the street. It allows the drivers to have a good vision, view of what's going on. That's at, at our grade schools, we, we've got that, but you're talking much younger kids, much smaller kids at this, you know, preschool, so you want to, want to be able to see that, so.
Brad, was that considered like parking?
That was not mentioned. That was not mentioned.
Does, does this application of that property, does that rule apply to this use of this property?
I'm unfamiliar with that. I mean, I'm not, that would be more Public Works, I believe, how that would fall for parking. So public parking, so I'm not as familiar with what Public Works has to say for that. But trustee Hilliard, I would imagine is knowledgeable because of being the former chief.
Yeah, I'm questioning it. I just wanted if it was considered from your perspective.
We did not speak of that. I did not look into that.
And I did discuss this with Chief Miller as well.
I read through the transcript and I didn't see that being an issue, that's why I.
No, I, I didn't see it in there as either, but there's issues that I see, just from my experience, that they, that the planning commissioners may not have thought of.
I too had similar concerns about, from what you guys have mentioned. The one that really concerned me the most was the potential of children running across the street at a time when, back in my generation, we looked for cars and we stopped. And today, people, people are supposed to stop for pedestrians, and some people are distracted, and children might run across the street, and that might be a, a bad thing. Because I too cut across First Street to go north of town a couple of times a day because it is more convenient than Main Street is. And so, and I wasn't aware of the 100 feet where the people can't park in front of their house, and I, if I were one of those homeowners, I would be really concerned if I couldn't park in front of my house, so.
Well, I agree with, you know, the concerns about parking. From my perspective, this is the wrong use for this piece of property. It's not conducive to, to me, either daycare or a preschool activity. And the problem with parking, this, this facility actually needs, you know, off-street access to the front door so that the street doesn't have to be used as a temporary stopping point. And, you know, based upon what trustee Hilliard has said, I'm going to guess you can't even park within 100 feet to drop off children then, in a crosswalk or at least in the crosswalk area. But this does not suit, this piece of property does not suit daycare or preschool from my perspective because it doesn't have any, you know, off-street access. There should be a place where parents can drive into, park, and let their kids either get out and go in or, you know, get in their car. When you look at what we did to Blue Jay out on North Main Street, they had to put in a second access point so that the bus, school bus can pull in and get off the street so that they wouldn't be stopping on Main Street. So from that perspective, you know, this type of facility needs to, or this type of business needs to have off-street parking and access. And going across the street seems like a potential solution for the user, but not for us as a community. Because if there's any problems in the future, who's going to have to deal with it? We are. So we have to solve the potential problems in the future. And like trustee Parrott mentioned, a five-year lease with a parking space across the street is a temporary solution, and we have to have permanent solutions. So I can't vote for this special use at all at this location.
Any other comments? If not, call the roll.
No. Parrott.
No.
Flunier.
No.
Hilliard.
No.
Leach.
No.
Motion fails.
Next item.
Next item, Your Honor, is petition number 21-03 zoning amendment.
You want to explain that a little bit?
Well, I'll move approval of petition 21-03ZA.
For a second?
Second.
All right, Brad.
So subject, so petitioner's petition to zoning change at 101 North Morton Avenue from B2 to R1.
Any questions? Brad, call the roll.
Parrott.
Yes.
Flunier.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item.
Last item, Your Honor, ordinance amending Title 10, Chapter 4 of the Village Code for the Village of Morton to provide amendments regarding front yard setbacks.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Want to explain that a little bit?
So this ordinance, we're replacing a map that was in the ordinance. You should have that in your packet. It's got a little pink color to it. This is the new map. The geographic area does not change from what was in the ordinance. We just believe this gives more clarity for anybody to look in there and see that. We have had inferbage in there that makes it more clear that previously it was a 25% reduction in front yard. Turian graph has gone through and went to the specific zoning areas and calculated and shown what that 25% would be, so it shows examples, it shows the exact setbacks from those areas. I think there was a little bit of language. You had some issues with Pat. Do you mind speaking of that? I think there was a little bit of language, you had some issues with Pat, do you mind speaking of that?
Yeah, the, primarily there was a difference between longstanding application of code language versus the text of the code language. So it had been applied, it was a 25% reduction. Code language actually said it was a reduction to up to 10 feet. So we clarified to match practice with code language. As well as my overall desire, which, and I think Brad shares this with me, but we have a lot of district-specific regulations buried in the general regulation section of 1043, which makes interpreting the code challenging because you have to read the district-specific regulations and bounce somewhere else without any clear connection between the two sections. So when we have opportunities like this to clean it up and get all the district regulations in the section for that district, we like to do that.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Blunear.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Nothing else, Your Honor.
All right, Leach trustee, anything tonight?
I just have a comment, if I might. Wanted to thank Mr. Marx for his efforts early in the morning. I catch him on a regular basis with his little white truck and taking care of the flower pots. And my wife thinks they're just awesome. And I think the whole Village of Morton thinks they're awesome. And I just wanted to thank you for your efforts. Here he is out there in his work clothes, watering them flowers, he's just picking them up. I mean, it's not like I, it's not like how I do it, I'll tell you.
He's on weekends, too.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Uh, I do have one announcement that the, uh, Baking Up Love movie premiere in Morton, Illinois, for the movie we've done, will be August 28th at 7 o'clock at the Morton Cinemas out here at Field Chopping Centers. And if you'd like to buy tickets, you have to go to the, uh, Baking Up Love website. The tickets are not available at the door, so you have to buy them ahead of time. And when you purchase the ticket, your name will be added to a list. So there'll be no physical ticket or electronic ticket given to you. You'll get your PayPal back with your charge. And when you show up, your name will say Jeff Kaufman, four tickets or however many tickets. And you can buy a $10 ticket to see the premiere. And if you want to go to the after-party with the movie stars, you have to spend another $20, and that'll be at Schooners'. So that will be on our Facebook page tomorrow morning, on our website, on the chambers. So it'll be readily available and it is easy to use. So if there is no further questions, I, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.